Good morning, everybody. We're going to get started. We have a big agenda today, and we're under a deadline because the three of us have some things we have to get to this afternoon at 12:00. So we're going to try our best to get this in and hear everybody's issues and concerns and comments. So as usual, we'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I ask that it just remain standing for a moment to have a moment of silence for Tom Ragland, former first selectman who passed away a few days ago? Thank you. Okay, and we have the sign up sheets. If you want to speak today, you have to sign up. There are two different ones. One is for the noise ordinance and one is for the regular agenda. And we ask that if you've heard your comments mentioned by other people, if you could hold it just in the interest of time, but if not, we're glad to hear your comments. Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of April 11th, 2024?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWiggin, yes.
Thank you. And is there a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of April 11th, 2024?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWiggin, yes.
Thank you. Going on to the first selectments updates, community service awards last night, GPS, Greenwich Public Schools was fun, lots of award winners there, and it was good to see everybody and congratulations to all those recipients. Today, we have the annual daffodil show at Christ Church at 3:00. For anybody that's interested, 6:30 tonight. We're at the Cub Scouts at North Mayanis. Tomorrow's a tree party for the annual tree party at McCartels for the Greenwich Tree Conservancy. There's also an event for the Ukraine effort. It's a concert at Country Day. And there's also, oh, this Saturday, there's two cleanups. There is 9:00, there is, well, Janet's going to get to this too. There's a 9:00 cleanup over at the treetops at Cogniaw Grove from 9:00 to 11:00. And then also, Live Like Luke is from 9:00 to 12?
9:00 to 1:00.
9:00 to 1:00 at Todd's Point. So hope to see you there at both of those. And on the, this Sunday at 12:00, we're going to have Animal Service Day proclamation at 12:00 for animal therapy. So it's always a fun event here, and they bring some animals that everybody seems to enjoy, so that should be fun. On May 1st, I'm going to be reviewing actions, have a meeting with DOT about Route 1, the project for Route 1 over at Byram Road and Pembwick Road. We'll be reporting on that. National Day of Prayer is May 2nd, 3:00 PM. That night, at 6:00 PM, we have the Jewish Family Services Spring Gala, and it's also the Boys and Girls Clubs Awards Night. And then also, on May 2nd, at 12:00, we have Law Day with a proclamation over Indian Harbor. And then now we're having all of the commissioning days. And we're starting off with Old Greenwich Club at 1:00 on May 3rd and 5:00 over at Indian Harbor. And then a meeting with the Friends of Bruce Park at 11:00 on May 6th, which is to go over the designation for preserving Bruce Park there to get that. So there's no, going forward, there's no development going on in that park. There hasn't been any, but that was a concern of the residents. So we, just like we did over in Binny Park a couple of years ago with the designation for the historic road, this would be for the full park over in Bruce Park. And on May 8th, the meeting with DOT regarding the parkway resurfacing. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lauren. Good morning, Lauren.
Good morning. Thanks, Fred. I'll keep my comments brief. I know we have a big agenda today. We have been super busy and there's a lot going on, and we missed Administrative Assistant Day yesterday. So we want to thank Barbara and Angie and Ken in the Office of the First Selectment, and we will definitely make it up to you. Also, in my role as liaison to the Selectments Nomination Advisory Committee, just wanted to remind people, and you'll start to see some of this, I think, in the KPI data in our session today. We are looking for a member of the Historic District Commission. We are looking for a member, we've always been looking for a member of the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Agency. And we'll also be looking for a new member for the Commission on Aging. I want to acknowledge a lot of the emails that we received with regard to the elevator at 290 Greenwich Avenue, the Wallace Center, the Senior Center, however, however anybody knows it, and also acknowledge some of the feedback that we've been getting on some of our upcoming deliberations, on some of the members that are coming up for renewal. And also want to announce that the Community Forum for Central Middle School Building Committee is scheduled for May 1. Thanks.
Thanks, Lauren. Good morning, Janet.
Good morning. And yes, it's been a really busy month in addition to, yeah, yesterday's Administrative Assistant Appreciation Day. This week is National Appreciation of Volunteers. So I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you to all of our community volunteers who make this community so vibrant, and especially thank you to all the volunteers who serve on our many boards, commissions, and committees. Greenwich just runs on volunteer power. We are so fortunate. I am looking forward to tomorrow's Stand Against Racism in this room at noon. And yes, I'm looking forward to Live Like Luke Beach Cleanup on Saturday. In addition, oh, May 1st is going to be very busy because in addition to the Central Middle School Public Information Forum, the Old Greenwich School Building Committee will be having an information session for RTM members. This is in advance of the RTM vote on the budget. So RTM members are invited to come to Old Greenwich School on May 1st and hear about the project and also get tours of the school. And I think that's it for me for now.
Okay, thanks, Janet. All right, going on to old business, request for nighttime construction work on Greenwich Avenue. I see Chris Farrell's here, our buddy from Eversource, and Andrew Vento from Penna Construction. Oh, yes, thank you for the reminder. We want to take a vote to amend the agenda, and I'll entertain the motion.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we amend the agenda to move the nominations of boards, commissions, and committees up before old business.
Janet Stone McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWiggin, yes.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, I have four today. So Lauren Raven, I motion that we appoint Matt Piscopo to the Energy Management Advisory Committee as a regular member for a term expiring December 31st, 2027.
Janet Stone McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWiggin, yes.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we nominate Natalie Queen as a returning member to the Board of Human Services in position R2 for a term expiring June 30th, 2027.
Janet Stone McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWiggin, yes.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we nominate Kate Tabner as a returning member of the Board of the Nathaniel Witherall, position R1, for a term expiring June 30th, 2027.
Janet Stone McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWiggin, yes.
And finally, Lauren Raven, I motion that we nominate Sue Moretti-Botson as a returning member to the Board of Parks and Recreation, position R2, for a term expiring June 30th, 2027.
Janet Stone McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Thanks for the catch. Okay, now going on to old business, request for nighttime construction work on Greenwich Avenue for Eversource, for the Eversource Energy Project. And we have Andrew Vento from Penna Construction, as well as Chris Farrell from Eversource here. So Andrew, floor is yours.
Good morning, Andrew Vento, AJ Penna Construction.
Bob Handler, Eversource Project Manager.
Good morning.
Again, from our last meeting, petitioning for, a permit application for three locations on Greenwich Avenue to perform reconstruction rehab on Greenwich Avenue.
Okay. Have not heard anything other than, just again, to repeat our concerns about the neighbors and getting it done as efficiently as possible. I know you always do that. But also, to revisit with us next month, just to give us an update on where you are so we can still get out to the public and let them know if there's been any changes or if the timeline has changed at all.
Okay.
Any other questions or concerns?
No, just as a practical matter, should we make the permit valid until our second meeting in May, whatever date, like that's?
Yeah, I think we can condition it just on the premise that you come back and just fill us in a month from now, just where you are. So we, just to let people know we're on top of it. We totally trust you, but again, we want to make sure the people, if there's any concerns coming up, that, you know, they're up to date with everything and that we can relay that to you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the request for nighttime construction work on Greenwich Avenue for Eversource Energy Project with a check in our second May meeting of the Board of Selectmen.
Janet Stone McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you. Next up is a request to extend the 2023 approval for temporary closure for water main replacement work on Greenwich Avenue between Elm Street and Grigg Street, and it's a second read. No. Well, is it for this item coming up? No, no one reached out? Okay, thank you. Okay. For this item, okay. They're for this item coming up. So yeah, so I must have raised your hand early, okay. And Justin is here from Aquarian, so.
He's on the Zoom. He's on the Zoom. I'll show you. He's on. He's raising his hand.
Okay, so if we could, we could let Justin, please. Yeah, thank you.
Why are we getting that?
Good morning. Can you hear me now?
Good morning, Justin. Yes, we can hear you.
All right, great.
So, thank you. Same thing, I have not heard anything. I don't know if my colleagues have in the last two weeks since the first read, but again, if you can just briefly update everybody the timeframe for this project for people who may not have been here before.
Sure, so the majority of water main has been installed. We've got side street times left to go. We are spilling, flushing, chlorinating, and sampling the last section of main. This week, we hope to have labs back next week so we can begin service transfers on the second phase. Projected completion is late June, early July. That's obviously weather dependent. We do know or we're aware of the planned sidewalk sale in early July. We are instructing our contractor, if they are not complete, to be off the road for that period. I know that question has come up. And yeah, so we're just looking to kind of continue our operations to the completion of the project.
Thanks, Justin. And the heavy, the dropping off of heavy equipment, you told us last time that was supposed to end around now, so those people over there on the Old DeLuca property site could get a little break at night. Can you update us on that?
Yeah, so the majority of the service work is a much smaller footprint. Penna is going to load the trucks early, try to mobilize as much equipment and material out to Greenwich Ave as possible, and then keep it on site until the morning hours when they bring everything back to the old track location.
Okay, thank you. We really appreciate that. I don't know if my colleagues had heard from any of the residents or have any additional comments?
Yes, we've gotten feedback for sure. And I think, do we want, we want to do the same thing that we've been doing, which is we would condition this on a check in?
No, absolutely, yeah. I mean, the feedback is from the same people. I haven't heard anything new, and we've been working, trying to find other spots, but it looks like they've, they're going to try and do their best to avoid those 2:30 in the morning drop offs.
Yeah, I would agree. We've had consistent feedback about the noise and where the equipment is stored and mobilized, moved back and forth. So as we continue to try to address that, and I agree, you know, let's just keep checking in. This is really important work that needs to get done, but it's also very disruptive to our businesses and our residences, but we know it needs to get done.
Yeah, and we did, just so you know, we have reached out, tried other venues, and we had DPW look at some other sites there, and it just, it wouldn't work. We asked the Board of Education there, and it just wouldn't work at this time, but the contractor is aware of it and is working hard, as we heard, to hopefully fix that problem.
So Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the request to extend the 2023 approval for the temporary closure for the water main replacement work on Greenwich Avenue between Elm Street and Grigg Street.
Do we want to include in that motion?
With inclusion of another update at our second May meeting.
Janet Stone McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWiggin, yes.
Thanks so much. And going to the last item under old business, this will be a fairly quick one. I see Jimmy Santa Guita's here and Angelo Pucci. A discussion of raising the permit fee for resident use of Holly Hill, of the Holly Hill Resource Recovery Center, or the dump. This has come up before, and it's been, for those who may not have been here, it's $25 as per the RTMs directive about four years ago. We've since heard back from lots of residents who had issues with this, and some of them were very, very legitimate. Some people have a hauler already, but they pay the $25 because they like to go down there. And certainly, I would not, I personally would not be in favor of raising that up there. They're not the issue here. Other people who have said they go down there very, very rarely, they travel a lot, and they compost, and they take care of most of their waste themselves. So certainly, they're not the issue. It's those people that we've heard that are going down there, you know, four or five times a week. As we like to say, it's open bar for them, and the rest of us pay for that. And so the problem is, I went to DPW again last week, and right now, unless the BET gives us money for another employee down there, or the longer term fixes, since something we've been talking about since the 1980s, is to redo the transfer station. It does, it's not functioning well the way it is, we know that. But we just, we can't catch everybody that goes in there with extra stuff. So unless we can get, you know, lobby the BET again, you know, for the next budget cycle to put somebody in there, it's really, really hard. And so, you know, we do lose money because people do take advantage of it. And I don't know if Angelo or Jimmy would like to say anything, but we're. You could, you could say something now, but it just keeps. You know, again, you've said a lot before, just if you could just summarize, Angelo, and Jimmy, if, whatever, you have something different to add. We already know the issue, but again, you've heard the reason why it's not, we can't do anything right now and send it to them because we don't have, there's no money in the budget for, again, I cut four positions this year, headcount four, and asked for two other positions that still would have had a net increase of four, and those two positions would have paid for themselves, and they got knocked out of the budget. So I doubt they're going to add any more.
First of all, I think that's comparing apples to oranges. That's a different subject. The subject we're talking about is the tipping fee, on the $25 tipping fee, okay? Or the tag program, whatever you call it, okay?
That has to go to, the RTM is the one that does that. So again, we.
Okay, but let me, let me go back and do a little history. The RTM suggested to you to put a committee together four years ago, which you did. It was the First Selectments Waste Management Committee. I sat on that committee, Jimmy sat on that committee, okay? We had a lot of dialogue back and forth, back and forth, and we came up with some different numbers, okay? Way, way back then. But the charge for that committee was, number one, reduce the waste; number two, increase recycling; and number three, save the town money. That $25 fee does not save the town money.
It doesn't.
Those tags cost $25. I think we sold back then 8,000 tags. Do the numbers. And we had DPW do the numbers in our committee. It came to like 200,000. Adding up the money it costs to haul their garbage away was $400,000 short. That's the shortfall that we're complaining about, okay? The town is funding that. This is what we're complaining about. They need to adjust that number so they pay their fair share. The haulers you hit us with $112, now it's going up to $119, they pay 100% of the refuse they bring in there. It's a wash. The landscapers, all the construction people, they pay their share. That tag does not pay their share. This is what we want.
And that's something, again, we've repeated that over and over again, and we said that, and I said it back in 2020, that $25 is basically for nothing. Again, it's going to, the RTM, I'm happy to support that, going back to the RTM and taking it up. But again, you'd have to look at a tier system here. The people who are already paying for a hauler, I don't believe they should be charged any more than a $25 fee. I really don't, because they're already paying for their garbage to be taken away.
Yeah, that's my question, Fred, because there's, there's different types of people who are getting the 25 tags, and I'm somebody, and one of you is my refuse hauler.
Yours got rejected, by the way. I just want you to know that.
I pay for my own, I pay for the refuse and recycling, but I also go. And my idea is, we have two cars. I would support it by a car because my husband has the tag in his car, and I go, and I have to go, oh, where's my tag? So that's my idea, by car, not by household.
Again, the logistics can be worked out. The seniors, like you say, people who have a hauler and also pay for the tag, those logistics can be worked out. But we're talking about the number of the shortfall that's got to be looked into. That's got to be addressed.
And so Angelo, so, and also, I've talked, spoke to people in other municipalities, including other states, and they have some different systems. Again, Jim's here from DPW. Jim, maybe, and he's taken all this in. If we could figure out some type of metrics, metric where we can account for some of this, some of these offsets and some of these different, these specific situations where, again, someone's going down there once a month, not the issue. Someone who has a hauler and pays the $25, again, not the issue. Could we maybe tailor something? If you can, you don't have to answer now, but just going forward, maybe we could have an offline discussion about addressing this and getting something to the RTM, just to make it a little bit more fair. Again, we're not, we're just looking for, to recoup the cost, not to make money on it. But I think that it's, they made their case, and we warned about this in 2020 when the RTM put the $25 fee on there. And I get it, it was a lot going on then, the big debate between tipping fee and pay as you throw.
Well, don't forget, Fred, the pandemic was back then, too.
I know.
So a lot of people couldn't attend those meetings, and they were trying to rush it.
No, I get it.
The last couple of months.
All right, so we'll, thank you so much. So we'll, we'll talk again offline and try and come up with something, and we'll continue this discussion.
We need to work on that shortfall, Fred. It's important.
Okay, thank you, Angelo.
Good morning, everyone. Jim Santa Guita, Santa Guita Sanitation. What Angelo touched on was very important as far as our tax dollars. And there are several stations there, which, Lauren, you take your own recycling, or you might have grass, or whatever the case may be. The problem is, is it's the garbage, because that's what the haulers are being charged. Now, five were the service lawns. It costs us with the 96, 119 coming in. The average household brings in around 1,600 pounds of waste a year. I've also measured all my residential trucks, so I know it, and that was in the low season, January, February, March. The national average is around 1,600 pounds. That equates to $96.20, which is a little over $8 more per month that I would have to charge, Lauren. If someone doesn't have a hauler, they're paying $25 to go in, and that only equates to $2. So there's over a $6 difference times however many. Now, the 8,000 passes, we realize that it's not everyone that's taking their own garbage. But Jim can work on something. My idea was, the garbage is going into the actual transfer station. They have to pull into that parking area, and they throw it over the wall. If there's a $400,000 difference, well, that would definitely cover someone that you would have to hire for that particular plus. So that's, that's an area that we could, we could start in. That's not counting the same residents at this $25. Not only do they get their garbage for nothing, but they get first 500 pounds free right now. There's no cost. And no one's really able to measure that, and we understand that. But they can go in, like Angelo mentioned, daily, several times, weekly. So they may not be going in once, like I would be taking Lauren's garbage in one time a week. They can go in seven or eight times, and they can go in with all the construction duty, from carpet, furniture, couches, landscape debris. So over, with that $25, they're not only not paying their share of the garbage end, they're getting, as we said, open bar to all these other items. So we know that it's difficult to do anything with the demographics of the transfer station presently, but there's no reason why we can't do something at that area where the drop off is for the residents who take their own garbage down, which would cover a lot of this expense. And that expense also to haul away all this debris, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars on top of what we're losing for the garbage end.
That's great points, Jimmy. It's what we warned about in 2020, but Jim has heard the whole presentation. Amy just walked in. So we'll sit back, circle back with them and see if we can come up with some type of tiered system that respects those who are already paying a hauler. So we're not looking to touch them or somebody who's not abusing the system, but certainly just to get some, not only recoup the cost, but just get some fairness back into it. Again, it's, we're not talking a lot of money, but it's just something that, again, we knew that was going to happen. But again, a lot was going on there. It was during the pandemic. We had that big debate, pay as you throw versus tipping fee, which settled a lot of it, which was great, but it certainly didn't get 100, capture 100%. So that's, and this is really would go a long way towards doing that, so.
Whoever dumps garbage, excuse me, over that wall, we dump it in the building, they dump it over the wall. Our cost is 119, their cost should be 119. And if you divide that out in the average, they would have to pay roughly $96.20 for dumping the garbage, as we do, for roughly 1,600 pound average per year. And I don't think that that's difficult to monitor that at that particular position. You know, whether it's a card and there's a gate there, they have to run in and out, I don't know, or someone being planted there.
Yeah, I mean, again, I spoke with other municipalities, including other states, and, you know, some have a system where there's, they have a code, a card there, where there's, you know, you scan it, and it, they're given, and it was Hilton Head, they have, it's given for free, but they have people they're monitoring, right? The problem is, we, we're having an issue, you know, if we ask for one or two more employees down there, it's a battle, man. It's a really big battle. Again, I, to repeat.
Maybe, maybe it's, sorry, I'm like just riffing.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Maybe it's, maybe it's, you know, because to get our beach cards, we have to, you know, prove that we're residents. So there's a, maybe there's a verification, and I don't even know if this is possible, and please don't like get mad at me, that if you can prove you have a hauler, you pay one fee, and if you don't have a hauler, you pay another fee. And if you're saying it's $100, so $100 a year, you know, and maybe there's a sliding scale for seniors or, you know, somebody that's, you know, receiving services from the Department of Human Services, you know, so it's not that the tag is different, you just pay a different fee because you don't have a. just pay a different fee because you don't have a hauler or you have a hauler.
Like I said, Lauren, the logistics can be worked out at some point.
Thank you, Jimmy. Angelo for a second time.
Huh?
Angelo Pucci for a second time.
Second time. Fred, if you remember, I sent emails to you folks two times, and I also sent it to the DPW. When she came here to ask for the increase back in January, and then the second read, she mentioned it was going from $112 to $119. Not once was it ever talked about the fact that the $25 fee was never addressed. Wasn't even saying that there's a shortfall, and it should be. At least bring it to the attention that something's happening, something's got to be looked into. So now, people are aware of it, the RTM's aware of it, and we can start working on it.
True.
So I think she needs to address that.
Could I weigh, could I weigh in?
Yes, you can weigh in.
Pun intended.
Yes.
Pun intended.
Over the scale.
You want to ask me a question?
No.
Oh.
Yes and no. I mean, so first of all, we don't, for the sake of today's discussion, we don't actually have a proposal in hand. And it's hard to, it's hard to respond to something without a proposal. And yes, it would ultimately, if we did have a suggested change, it would have to go to the RTM. It wouldn't happen, at the very least, until June, most likely September. So this is not something that's going to happen anytime soon. I just want to, for the record, say, I am very open to a different system. And I'll just put it out there. I am very open to a unit-based system. What we're talking about today, though, I mean, talk about comparing apples and oranges, the tipping fees are per ton, and the permit fee is per year. And it's not just for municipal waste, it's to get into Holly Hill. So people like me, I do have a hauler, but I go on occasion to take my organics there. And that's something we absolutely don't want to discourage people to do. We want, we want, and if anything, we should probably be paying people to come bring their organics to Holly Hill. So this is not something that's, that's, you know, easily fixed. I super appreciate, as you say, Amy Seibert just walked in, Jim Michael is here. It's going to take some resources to reconfigure Holly Hill in a way that, that makes sense. But I'll tell you, I know that other communities have, have done unit-based pricing. Ithaca, New York, back in the day when I was a college student, we had, we used stickers on our bags, and it still works. I was one of those students going around in college town, educating people about how that worked. So I know that we can do it, and it would, it would definitely behoove the town, but it's something that's going to take some time. I, I don't know if there's other people who wanted to weigh in on this.
Well, thank you. No, I agree. It's, it's not an easy fix. Certainly, I think we made great strides in 2020, but we knew, we warned then that it was not 100%. And certainly, we want to encourage people to recycle, including food scraps. So again, we'll, we'll circle back offline with Jim and Amy and see if we can start working on, and even, even if we have to reconstitute the committee to look at the different ways, I'm open to do that.
I would totally be open to that.
They did good work, and we'll certainly, we can do that, because they did work. And that's, you know. Did you sign up?
Do we have this, should we, can we grab the signup sheet?
Yeah, so we can. Thanks, Cheryl. Morning, Cheryl.
Cheryl Moss. I was the co-chair of the First Selectment Waste Management Committee with these gentlemen here. And yes, we, we had made a recommendation to use a, a unit-based pricing system, and to, that way, it would definitely, people would have to pay for what they're throwing away, and if they're recycling, they don't have to pay for anything. The idea of increasing the permit fee will definitely hinder recycling. We've already seen an increase in waste disposal, tonnages, and a decrease in recycling with that, with that small permit fee of just $25. We need to be encouraging it more. And I know Holly Hill needs a big revamp, and I know it needs other, you know, more staffing. But that's a simple thing that we could have done. The Waste Management Committee voted on it, and we recommended it, and it was, it was declined. And I think this is an opportunity to rectify that and, and make, make this work for everybody. It would be a very simple way to make sure that everybody's paying for what they throw away. So that was all I would like to add.
Thank you, Cheryl. Last, yeah, Jim Santa Guida for a second time, and then we'll move on to the next item.
I don't, is this on?
It's on.
Yes, it is. Okay. What Janet had mentioned, we're not looking to slow down recycling. We're not looking to stop people from bringing in batteries. All we're saying, and it's, it's a very simple fix, if someone is at the wall where the garbage gets thrown out, whether it's carpet or anything else that they're bringing in, they have to throw it over that wall, specifically garbage. That area is the only area that would be charged, because they're bringing in the same amount of garbage that I would bring from anyone else's house, if they're bringing their own. We've waited over four years. It's not really changed. So the town has lost those tax dollars. And that $400,000, again, that Angelo mentioned, would definitely cover someone being there.
Okay, thank you. That's, Jimmy has the final word on it. Angelo.
That $400,000 was four years ago, Fred. I know. I'm just so adamant about straightening this out. This is unfair, and I think it's got to be taken care of.
Okay. No, thank you. I appreciate it. And this is a great discussion, and definitely needs to be looked at. And maybe we will reconstitute the, the committee. Okay, I will make a note of it. Going on to new business, I see Chief Heavey's been waiting patiently over there. He's got a request, first read for approval of an ordinance for use of automated traffic enforcement to safety devices. I think you all know what that is. And our town administrator, Ben Brienion, is also here.
Just real quick introductory comments. The ordinance in front of you is for the consideration as the traffic authority. This does not go before the RTM. This is under, because it's traffic authority, the charter's clear, it's under your, your authority. So the first and second read, that's the only steps involved. It does not, does not require RTM. The ordinance in front of you is a brand new one. It's adding to Chapter 14, Vehicles and Traffic. It follows most of the languages required from the Public Act that was passed in 2013. It's referenced in the preamble, the first paragraph. Concurrently, the administration has issued an RFP, which is out there for vendors who actually will do, do this work. The RFP closes May 9. This, but this RFP plus the ordinance is, is joint work between OFS, Public Works, and the Police Department. But the Police Department's Assistant Enforcement provision is, is primary. And just want to remind the, the board that the number one top priority in the Resident Satisfaction Survey was traffic issues. And the intent of this is to really hone in on school zones. So when we issued the RFP, we highlighted both public and private school zones that we would like these devices to install that. But I'll turn it over to Chief to answer any, the detailed questions. But we'll, we'll happy to answer any questions. But we look forward to hopefully the second read, May 9.
Thank you, Ben.
Morning, Chief.
Good morning. So as Ben has already mentioned, the Public Act 23116 empowered us to be, as a town, to be able to, to use automation. And we've already leveraged technology in a number of areas, like license plate readers that have made an impact on crime, and this could certainly help us on traffic safety. But again, it's, the primary thing is that it's going to provide improved security, safety. And these automatic devices, there's a number of vendors who are submitting RFPs, will be able to transmit that information to us, and it'll be reviewed by our traffic section. And the ordinance has also established a hearing process, just like we do for parking, parking tickets. So it's, it's going to be a positive thing. Most of the study, and that's another important part of it, is that there'll be a traffic study done in advance of installation of any device to determine where the devices will do the most good. So although we have 15 private, you know, public schools and six private schools, we'll determine which schools are, they would be the most effective. There's some schools that just wouldn't warrant having that every, we're not going to put these up on every street, in other words. I also wanted to highlight that there'll be a, a privacy inclusion, you know, as far as how much time we retain the information and those types of things. And just, again, the first violation's going to be $50. The second one would be $75, and then anyone thereafter. Part of that fine structure will pay off the vendor to his expenses, his expenses for installing the device, and the remainder of that would go into a fund that would be earmarked for traffic safety initiatives. So, and again, it would take some time to have the devices paid off, but then after that, we'd be able to use that, that amount to, for other items.
Thank you, Chief.
And I guess I think between Ben and I, I think that's the good overview of the system, and we're pretty confident that there's some really outstanding vendors that are going to give us RFP, proposals.
That's, I appreciate that, Chief, and the welcome change. I know that originally, when that bill was introduced in Hartford, that money was not coming, it was going back to the state. So that's, that's a welcome change. The $50 first offense fee, I think, is reasonable. Back in 2002, I was teaching, I was in New York, and I was going out to dinner in the Bronx, and I was on Pellon Parkway, and I went underneath the light, thought I beat the light. But three weeks later, I got something in the mail, and it was close. But it was $50, so it's.
I paid it for you.
So, so that's, I thought it would be a lot more. So that's, it's not that much. But still, I never did it again, I don't think. So I think that does, it will teach people a lesson. But it's, it's not a revenue generator. This is really to change habits and for public safety.
The biggest impact is that most of the studies say that by the installation of the cameras, including the warning signs, that it reduces the speeding in that area like 50 or 60%. So, you know, there'll be eventual time where there'll be some fatigue, or where some, where we have good compliance in a certain area, but it's definitely going to be an advantage.
Chief, one question. Citation hearings shall be conducted by hearing officers appointed by the First Selectmen. How many, as far as terms and things like that, appointing them, is it going to be similar to exactly the way we do it with the parking enforcement?
I would, I would say that it would be, you know, again, we're going to issue a lot less of these tickets than we are parking. So there'd probably be a certain percentage of people who are going to challenge them. So I'd say we'd probably model the parking violation appeals process.
So I should start looking now? All righty. We'll put something out there. Appreciate it. I have no other questions.
Another board commissioner committee. Yeah, I was thinking about the, the slowing down, because you'll see the warning signs. Every time I get on 95 at exit three, and it's slow, I said, they must be having a sign up at exit five. Of course, everybody has to slow down to read the sign. So I think it's a great idea for school locations. And I've already received some emails in support of it, especially because it's at school locations where we have our children.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
So thank you, and thank you, Ben, for clarifying. So it, the decision rests with us. It doesn't go to the RTM. So that was one of my questions. I know we've individually been briefed. This is, obviously, this is, this is a very interesting approach. I'm definitely supportive of it. I, I think that there's going to be a lot of community support for it. But I will say, just to manage expectations, I, I think we need a public information session to explain to the, to the community, you know, how this works. Because, I mean, I know it was a lot to take in when, when we were given a briefing. I'm not sure that the public exactly knows how this all works. So I guess that, that's my, that's my one, not caveat, but that's my one request is, you know, I'm, I'm, like I said, I am definitely supportive of this. But I just think that we've got to get everybody on board and informed about how it actually works.
Sure. Ben?
I wonder if a way to do that is a quick recording video. You know, I'm just thinking of how busy the next two months are.
That's fine.
You know, get that out through your community connections, Fred, and get that out through social media. I mean, we don't always have to meet in person. I think we could start to use some digital capabilities to get the word out.
Absolutely.
I would just suggest we can leverage the successful vendor. The ordinance is, is one piece of it. You still need the vendor to do, to do the work. The ordinance without the vendor, they're, so they're, they're really joined at the hips. I would suggest once a vendor's selected, we could work through with them on, because they have a, they, some of the presentations we sat through, they have pretty good public information on how does it work, how does it look. And we still have significant input on how we want to tailor it for the, for the town. So I, I think you can still pass the ordinance, but the real piece will be, is how does that vendor mesh with the ordinance and make it work? And I think the public information is a good idea from that angle.
Right. Yeah. So we can get, we can get that done probably through them, and also, as Lauren said, other, other means. Thank you. Okay. Next up is a request for an amendment to the traffic ordinance, Schedule 1, parking prohibited on Weaver Street. And Deputy Chief Craig Gray is here, as well as Michael Kisselak from DPW. Morning, Chief.
Good morning, all. Thanks for having me. There's actually two proposals that are going to go forward, all right? And just, I'll just read it. There are actually two proposals. The first proposal, as we discussed, was the Weaver Street. The second is going to be the Mallard Drive. And for those proposals, Parking Services, as well as the Police Department, have received numerous complaints concerning parking safety in those areas. These complaints were corroborated by our officers' observations. In response, the town's engineering department conducted a detailed traffic survey at both locations. Michael Kisselak conducted the survey and explained the outcomes. Please note, Parking Services concurrently, but separate from the Mallard Drive traffic study, received a petition seeking to modify the resident parking permit guidelines on the surrounding streets. I bring this up only because we recognize that the Mallard Drive changes would likely impact and have a ripple effect on the surrounding streets. And with a request for a modification, we felt that the two of them should be considered jointly. It is not before you now for the resident parking, but I bring it up because in our public notification to the area residents, they were put together, right? And so there may be some chatter about it that comes together, but they're going to be detailed separately. So we ensured that the residents were kept informed about the proposal, allowed them to share their feedback. And following that community feedback, we have temporarily set aside the residential permitting issue. We plan to revisit the modification of the resident parking permit for this neighborhood separately at a later date. Okay? So today, all we're doing is seeking the board's approval for the, for the packets in front of you, based upon the engineering studies done by traffic engineering, for both Weaver Street and Mallard. So if there's any questions regarding that specifically, Michael is here also to answer the traffic studies.
Okay. Just for a point of clarification. So the resident parking permit program is only being considered for?
It's not. So what happens is, is that when we, when we sent it out, we recognized that Mallard Drive, Wigeon Way, Penn Tail, Swan Terrace are all kind of interrelated. Swan Terrace had a proposal, a petition in, Wigeon Way had one in. And so what we did is, we kind of looked at it together. We let them know that it's all going on, but those neighborhoods are all tied together. You make a change to one street, it's going to ripple over to the next, right? And so after we got the feedback notifying them of what was going to be transpiring for Mallard, we got some feedback regarding the residential parking, and so we paused it so that we could take that into further consideration. So the only thing before you today is the engineering studies for Mallard Drive and Weaver Street.
No parking.
No parking.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Appreciate it. I guess, I don't know if you want to take the comments now for this, or do you want to wait till the comment section?
People have signed up specifically for this agenda item.
Okay. So do we have the?
I have the list.
Okay, so we can, thank you, Chief. So we can, Michael, do you want to sit? Unless you have something to add, otherwise stand by for any questions that may come your way. Thanks, Michael.
Okay, the first resident who's signed up for Mallard Drive is Lauren Menkoff.
Do I come up here?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I've never been to one of these meetings.
Yeah.
So you guys might have to guide me a little bit. So I guess we are taking out the issue of the parking. So I guess we are taking out the issue of the parking.
The residential parking on Wigeon...
On Wigeon, not the parking on Mallard on the curve.
Mallard remains, yes.
Okay, so that's still being addressed.
That remains.
Just announce yourself.
Yes, yes, okay.
Thanks.
Sorry, I have a speech, I'll try and make it.
Thanks, Lauren.
I'm sure. So my name's Lauren Menkoff, I live at 19 Mallard Drive, I am the curve specifically, and I just want to talk about how this has affected both our safety and quality of life for me and my neighbors. Recently, the issue of parking along the curve near my house has come under scrutiny. Following repeated calls to police by a concerned citizen, this is based off of the letter that was sent to us, is that somebody called in three days in a row. A police officer did come to the curve, to my house, to, I guess, observe exactly what you just addressed, which is people do park along the curve. But the issue was is that the police officer came specifically to my house and asked to speak to me, I was not home during that time, so I called the non-emergency line, asking why this police officer wanted to speak to me. I was given a complaint number, I called the chief of police, asking about this, my call was not returned. So I'm very confused as to who called, why they wanted to come to my house, what they wanted to talk about, and then this letter came, which kind of explained it, but also didn't. And what I want to address is, since 2017, when we bought our house, I've talked about the concerns of speeding on the street. I've reached out over the phone, in writing, and in person, more times than I can count. I was told that we were going to get a sharp curve sign that was going to go up, and speed studies were conducted, which you just addressed, and the issue with these speed studies, both were done during construction on the street, which I know another neighbor of mine also addressed, therefore, the speed studies should not be considered valid, because construction slows down traffic in general. So we're not getting a real picture of the speeding, and parking along the curve where I live naturally slows down the traffic. The incidental safety measures have become crucial. Every day as I maneuver into my driveway, I'm met with honking and cars dangerously close to my vehicle, where my children, a five-year-old, a three-year-old, and a six-month-old are all in the car. With two more children on the way, the stakes are becoming impossibly high. It's crucial to note that several accidents have occurred on this curve due to the high speeds, two of which involved high school students, further reinforcing the notorious nickname of Mallard Drive, which is Whip Road. Furthermore, along this dangerous bend at houses numbered 11, 17, and 19, there's 10 children under five, and I feel like their safety is not being considered when we talk about this. Additionally, it's important to address the evolving dynamics of our neighborhood. Homes in this area are being built up, and we're witnessing a turnover with many young families moving in, drawn to the proximity to town and community environment. These families expect and deserve safe streets. The proposed restrictions on parking along this curve not only jeopardizes our safety, but also impacts our community life. How are we supposed to host friends and have our children have playdates getting in and out of the cars on Mallard Drive, whether it's at the curve or not at the curve, because the speed issue is still not being addressed? I also am curious why the singular concern from an outside caller three days in a row is being addressed with such urgency, while my repeated indirect appeals coming from someone who lives on the curve in question have never been addressed. If we can't have consistent enforcement against speeding, let us at least keep this natural calming measure in addition to where are we supposed to park our cars? I live there. I feel like people living on the curve, their opinions should matter more than anybody. So I guess that's it.
Thank you, Lauren, I appreciate it. Okay, appreciate that. Who's next?
Okay, we have Joan Stewart, also from Mallard Drive.
Thanks, Barb. Morning, Joan.
Good morning, thank you for being able to speak.
Thank you, good morning.
I've lived on Mallard Drive, at One Mallard Drive, for 57 years, and still live there, excluding four years when I was in college. I also wanted to mention, it was my mother was the one that got the guardrail put up on the post road on the corner of Overlook, because one day there was an accident, and the car fell, came right through the bank into our backyard. She lived, an older woman, lived on Overlook, sorry, she lived in Millbrook, and the car came right down through the bank and almost hit a tree, and she survived. And it was the day after that was when my mother called the town, I believe it was a town, I don't know if it was a state, but the bottom line is, there's a guardrail up there on that corner. I do not think, sorry, how do I do this, like that? Not used to this.
Perfect.
I do not think there should be parking anywhere on Mallard Drive, especially on both sides. However, if there has to be a middle ground decision, then the logical place for parking is only on one side of the street, away, far away after the curve, heading toward Anderson. The curve meaning where Lauren just mentioned where she lives. Motorist speed, much too fast, especially on the straightaway. Worker trucks straddle the sidewalks. I don't know if you know that, but these trucks are parking halfway on the street and halfway on the sidewalk. That should be, especially, should be prohibited. Trucks and/or visiting cars, or homeowners' cars, should park in the homeowner's driveway. Cars in one's driveway should not be straddling the sidewalk at the end of their driveways, forcing people to walk into the street with their child, stroller, or dogs. I have photos and videos, if anyone wants to visit with me, I'd be happy to show you, where people are parking in their driveways on Mallard, but their car is going over the sidewalk. It was, it would be as if I live on the corner on One Mallard, which is right off the post road, and there's a sidewalk that goes there. I would never park my car, or have cars parked, blocking that sidewalk, it doesn't make sense. Sorry, I'm just trying to do this from my phone.
Take your time.
The bus designated stop on Mallard should be where there is already a crosswalk sign between Mallard and Pintail. That's my suggestion for this bus stop. There was a bus that's been stopping right on, outside my house, stopping on Overlook, right before the corner of Mallard, right off the post road, which causes all these cars lined up going up to the post road, which people coming to turn either left or right, they don't know there's a bus stop there, so there can be another collision going on there. So then the bus started moving right in front of my house. I suggest, what I just mentioned, where that bus stop should be. It should not be on any corner, it should be further up the road. Sorry, I have to go back to the page again. Cars or trucks should not park anywhere on the corners of Mallard, it is much too dangerous for everyone. I predicted an accident would happen, and there was one. So on that corner where Lauren lives, right going around on Mallard, going up to my house, I predicted, Fred would even remember when I called him, and shortly after that, there was a collision. Let's see what else I wanted to say. As I mentioned, I have photos and videos, happy to show anyone, and also, as a sidebar, I believe there should be no commercial trucks or buses using Mallard as a cut-through street. I'm talking about when they're not working, I know there's worker trucks that are, people are doing all their yard work, and they have trucks that come in and out, but what has happened, and I believe it's ever since GPS, that's when how Mallard became a cut-through street. Anderson Ridge is what it was called, and they took the sign down, it was on Wigeon Way, and it was a charming neighborhood, it still is a charming neighborhood, and I think it's wonderful that we have so many children. Every other house seems like there's children, and I love it, it makes me feel young again. And I believe, I agree with Lauren about, she's got kids and a couple more on the way, they should be safe. All the kids should be safe, and everyone should be safe. I should be able to walk my dog on the sidewalk and not have to go in, I literally had to walk my 15-and-a-half-year-old dog into the street, because the cars were jammed into their sidewalk, into their parking lot. They had so many cars in the parking lot, they were out covering the sidewalk. So if there's something we can do about prohibiting buses even from going through Mallard, I know at the end of, you know, I went to Greenwich High School, I went to Country Day, my mother was the one that started, because my father had died when I was young, and I didn't have, she didn't have a way to get to work and to get me to Country Day, so they, my mother was the one that got a bus stop on Mallard Drive from Country Day. I just think, and they had it at the end of my house until like the next house, so it wasn't near the corner. I predict, I don't mean to talk so much, sorry, I'm overtired, but this bus stop cannot be on Overlook anymore, it should not be on, right in front of my house on Mallard, and I'm not saying it's because it's on my house, it's because it's very dangerous. And thank you, and I'm available for any questions, if anyone wants to come to my house, and I have videos and photos, if anyone wants to see them, of this corner that we're talking about. Thank you.
Joan, thank you very much, much appreciated.
The next resident who's signed up is Sarah Collins.
Good morning, how are you?
I am well, thank you very much, and I really appreciate the opportunity to be here and to speak to you all. When I began to live full-time on Wigeon Way almost 20 years ago, I didn't fear approaching the intersection of Mallard and Wigeon Way on my way to Putnam. But over the years, increasingly, wantons, people who do not obey this, I'm sorry.
You're doing fine, you're doing fine.
But over the years, no one really is paying attention to the speed limit anymore, and they're not paying any attention to the safety of the others, people who live in the neighborhood. So if parking cars on the curve helps slow down these speeding cars, I'm all for it. Let's face it, the reason that people speed on Mallard Drive is that there's nothing that keeps them from doing it. It's about a half a mile from the intersection with Anderson up to the intersection with Overlook, before you have any stop sign, and I think there's only one crosswalk. So if you're in a hurry, want to cut through our neighborhood and go fast, so that means when I'm at the stop sign on Wigeon, trying to get into Mallard Drive to go to Putnam, I have to be exceedingly careful, because those people who are going around 40 miles an hour or more around that curve can't see me, and I don't have an awful lot of time to see them either, because it's a very, very short period of time. I do think that unless we can get those electronic devices, that I'm all in support of, and we are in a school zone into our neighborhood, and unless we actually have some stop signs and some enforcement of the speed laws on Mallard Way, that the more parkers we have on Mallard Way, the better, or Mallard Drive, I'm sorry, the better. And I really don't understand why there isn't a stop sign at the intersection of Wigeon Way and Mallard Drive, on Mallard Drive. I think that would help the situation and bring more safety to our neighborhood.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Do we, Barb, do we have anybody on Zoom?
Yeah, there's one person, Mariah Genovese.
Mariah, oh, okay. Mariah, sorry, bad timing, my fault.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Weekend, Mariah, good morning.
Sorry, I'm unable to attend in person, we're out of town, but I didn't want to miss it, this is, it's an issue for us too, and we want it to be heard. I'm at 11 Mallard Drive, so I'm at the beginning of Mallard, if you're going from Putnam, and I'm not on the curve, I have a big driveway, so parking on the street is not a necessity for us, but we do support the issue of the parking, of allowing people to park on the street, because just naturally slows people down. We see all the time, when we walk, people coming down Mallard, it's a straight shot with no barrier. It's easy to speed if you're not paying attention, unintentionally you're speeding, and it just happens. I'm walking, screaming at people to slow, for them to slow down, and even if you try to drive on it, despite the speed limit, people honk at you, they'll go around you. We are just trying to create a safe environment for our kids to ride their bike, if a kid falls out of the bike into the street, they'll get hit by cars going for over 40 miles an hour. It's scary. So we have requested many times for a study on speed, that always happens at very inconvenient If a stop sign is not available, or a speed dump is not available to us because of emergency vehicles, we would be even happy to raise the funds for an electric speedometer, just so people are aware of their speed. I mean, we are just trying to be as available and helpful as we can to just create a solve for this. With GPS in ways, Mallard's a great cut-through, and we understand that, and people in a rush will always speed, so let us just find a way to remind them that they have to slow down a bit.
Okay, Mariah, thank you so much, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one other speaker who signed up for Weaver Street, that's Paul Terrari.
Paul?
Bless you.
Morning.
Good morning.
Green, yeah. Okay. Hi, Paul Terrari, I'm a resident of 64 Weaver Street, thanks for the opportunity to speak. Our issue is, we have four, we have four multifamily homes, two on Weaver Street and two on the street in the back, that kind of share a common driveway that comes out onto Weaver Street, which is a very busy street, it's a downhill, and we just happen to be on the spot where, to our left coming out, there's like a crest of a hill, and then you start to downhill, and it's probably the only, for whatever, just because of the way the houses are built, it's like in front of our house, right there between us and the crest, is like the only place where you can really park on the street, and there's a wide enough shoulder to park. And I've been a longtime resident there, but it's just been recently, people have been starting to park commercial vehicles and large vehicles between us and the crest of the hill, which is about 250 feet away, and it's just become untenable and very dangerous. All the residents of the homes can't see coming out of our driveway to our left. The best we can do is see to the crest of that hill, and that's all we're hoping, and unfortunately, like other people have just said, you know, it's a day and age where people are just, you know, there's more and more speeding, and people are flying down the hill. So we, you know, we registered complaints with the police, we're thankfully, it came out, people did a study, and they agreed with us. I think if the materials had an impact evaluation, and they did the sightlines and all that, I think a recommendation came to cut out some of the parking, maybe 50 feet, and we just wanted to say, we're very strongly wanted to just, on behalf of all the houses, you know, that's the issue, and it's really becoming tenable, and we're putting our life in our hands to kind of pull out of our own driveway, and to try, especially to try to make a left. And so we actually think that recommendation doesn't go far enough, we still don't like that there's any parking, I mean, we'd love to use the parking ourselves for visitors, but we all park in our back and pull our cars tight together. And, you know, we were, we put in, we would hope that, you know, a lot of that parking would come out, and in fact, even the, it's tougher for the people dropping the mail to get into, because our mailboxes are right in front, and snow gets pushed into there. So again, we just wanted to, again, support why we're doing it. We're still a concern, the recommendation doesn't go far enough, we'd rather err on the side of caution, and hate to see an unfortunate accident, again, because, simply because we can't, you know, we literally can't see, and we're taking our life in our hands, so we hope the impact study considered that it's not just, I know it says in there, we assume we did this based on this people driving, but like I said, everybody else, there's just, cars are coming down so fast, we really, you know, need the opportunity to see, to see as far as we can to get out of our own driveway, so, and it is, it has become very, very dangerous, especially with people parking small commercial vehicles with no window, you just, so, that was it. Anything else? My other residents won't make sure I said what they wanted to say, so, thank you.
Thank you, Paul, I've heard from a few. Thanks, good to see you. Okay, is that it for the signup sheet, Barb?
Yes, for the, these topics, yes.
Okay, thank you so much, much appreciated. And now we're going to go on to the public hearing on the noise ordinance variance. Yes, good.
Done?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief, appreciate it, thanks Ben, much appreciated. Okay, thank you. Floor is yours, Ben.
Just make some introductory comments. Once I think I'm done, I think from a process perspective, just formally open the public hearing and just make sure you formally close the public hearing, so we, we have that on, on record. The memo in front of you is for the town is seeking variance. And I'll just, a quick aside, I do remember making a comment when we originally presented the ordinance to the BOS, that the variance section has never been used by, when it was under the Board of Health. I'll just leave that as it is, that, I'm never going to say that again, that never say never, but we've never done the variance before. But what's in front of you is having to seek a variance from the recently adopted noise ordinance, particularly chapter 6B, section 6B6, paragraph E6. I won't read it to you, but I think the towns, the memo we have here really articulates some of the issues that we are up against. But the one section I really wanted just to emphasize here is, is the page two of the memo. If I could have put it in larger font and caps, I would have, but I thought that may have been too aggressive. But I'll just read that. "The town is committed to transitioning to battery-operated leaf blowers. However, given the large unbudgeted expense in the memo, we said we are anticipating it will cost three, north of $330,000 between the number of units and some of the other ancillary charges. Coupled with both Department of Public Works and Parks and Rec want to continue to pilot and test equipment to meet their needs, and also the ability to modify the procedures, we recognize that's important, just as important than just to replace the equipment. Given those three items, that's why we're asking to seek a variance from the Board of Selectmen on the ordinance. And we are asking it to be no later than May 20th, 2027." And we do have representatives from Parks and Rec and Public Works to speak on a heavy behalf. But that's all my introductory comments, I'll let you open the public hearing, thank you.
Thank you, Ben, I appreciate it, and just echo those thoughts. This is, I think, a common sense approach to it, to protect taxpayer dollars, new equipment that we don't have to throw away, and to gradually morph into the summer months use of electric, and not this shoulder seasons. And, you know, I figured it would be a five or six-year phase in period, and looks like it's about three years, so it's not even that long. So I, but anyway, but we wanted to do our due diligence and, and have this public hearing. So with that, we'll, we'll open it up.
Okay, the first speaker who signed up is Peter Lawrence.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Is this on?
It's on, Peter. Good morning, Peter.
Morning. I'm here not to speak about the specifics of why this ordinance was put into place. I think this isn't the proper form that's been done. What I just cannot fathom is, with all the discussion that's occurred on this topic over probably a decade, that the town is now looking for special treatment. The two biggest budget departments in the town of Greenwich, the Board of Ed and DPW, are having trouble trying to comply with this. And you're not listening to the private landscapers who have the exact same problem, don't have the resources of the town behind them, and this is incredibly unfair. If you give any leeway to the town, it must be across the board for everybody in this town. It's outrageous to think that you would do, pass a law and then exempt yourselves.
Okay, well, I just, just to, to.
The rules for thee, but not for me.
Point of clarification, this is RTM took this up, so we didn't, we, the Board of Selectmen, okay, this is part of the process, but the RTM, they took that up, not, we did not come to that conclusion.
Then, then you should be committed to live with what they put there because you didn't fight hard enough to make it work properly.
We have a decentralized form of government, as you well know, you've been here many, many decades. So obviously, we may have difference of opinions, but sometimes there's going to be differences of opinion on it. And sometimes we win, sometimes we don't, but our own personal opinions. But your point has been heard.
I certainly hope if, if you do this, that the private landscapers take it to court and win. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and then we have a couple in the back there, see some people, so we're going to hear from them too. Who's up next?
The next speaker is Vatlana Wasserman.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Honorable members of the Board of Selectmen, I want to first thank you for your part in getting a noise ordinance passed, which gives residents a few months' break every year from the harmful noise and toxic fumes produced by gas leaf blowers. The first effort to achieve a summer moratorium began in 1992, and generations of residents are immensely grateful to you, to the RTM, and everyone who helped make it happen. And I want to give a special thank you to Ben Branyan, the liaison for the town, for helping it, make it a smooth rollout. I appear before you to ask you not to grant a three-year waiver to the Parks and Rec Department from the noise ordinance rules on gas leaf blowers for the following reasons. First, a variance is not necessary. The town currently has 58 backpack blowers and 11 handhelds. It is not necessary to replace this entire fleet with electric blowers, since gas blowers will still be needed for nine months out of the year, and they're permitted for store and cleanup year round. The only thing that's needed to comply is a certain number of electric leaf blowers, and it's important to find out what that number is. Parks and Rec should provide an estimate of how many electric blowers they need just for the summer, and what the cost is for acquiring that number before any decision on a three-year exemption is considered. Second, a three-year waiver will cost the town more. Operating costs per single gas blower for the summer season is over $1,000. This assumes that each blower uses four gallons of gas a day and is used for five days a week. Gas is $3.66 a gallon. The summer ban is 18 weeks, that's $1,317 in gas per blower. If parks use 30 blowers in the summer, that's $39,000 just in operating costs. It makes sense to reduce the operating costs by investing in the green equipment. Third, creating a variance complicates enforcement of the, and education about the new rules. For town properties in residential zones, it complicates our efforts to educate landscapers and residents. There are hundreds of landscapers serving Greenwich, and there's no centralized database for notifying them all about our new rules. It's taking an immense amount of effort and time on the part of the Conservation Department in Quiet Yards Greenwich to identify all of the landscapers and inform them. When they drive by and see gas leaf blowers being used on town properties during the prohibited months, they're less likely to comply with the rules that we are telling them. Fourth, a variance complicates enforcement. Enforcement the first year will be complicated enough without fines, without a zoning officer to help notify violators, and with the requirement the police devote resources to drive over and witness the offense. If police are handling calls about use of gas leaf blowers on town properties, they'll be less likely to respond to calls about actual violations. And finally, a variance burdens residents who live near town properties and will be denied a quiet summer. In brief, because it's not necessary to replace all 69 gas leaf blowers to allow Parks and Rec to do summer maintenance, because continued use of gas leaf blowers costs the town more, because an exemption complicates our efforts at education and enforcement, and because of the burden to residents living near school properties, I urge you not to grant a three-year variance. Instead, please have Parks and Rec provide a budget of how many electric blowers they actually need to get through the first summer, and see if a modest interim budget can be provided to help Parks and Rec comply with the town rules. I thank you so much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
The next speaker is Elizabeth Dempsey.
Good morning, Elizabeth.
Good morning, everybody, Elizabeth Dempsey. Thank you for this hearing and for the incredible work to reinstate the noise ordinance on behalf of your constituents after the Board of Health abandoned it. For 30 years of work and multiple RTM votes, it has been clear and that overwhelmingly residents want limits on these machines. And they, along with landscapers, want the town to comply. Now is the time to save money and reduce noise and air pollution because, one, electric blower technology is now competitive, or it exceeds the power of gas. The town will save a lot of money in operating these machines. The average electric blower pays for itself in one to two years because operating costs for these machines are 75% less than the costly fuel and maintenance required by gas blowers. Our hardworking town employees will not be subject also to the same deafening noise and carcinogenic fumes. So why are we actually waiting for three years to start the process? I would ask the Board of Selectmen for three points of clarification on this variance. What are the numbers, what are the numbers for costs and numbers of machines for complying just for the summer? As the current numbers in the analysis submitted appear to reflect the entire fleet. Blowing dust and sand off hardscapes hardly seem to require duplication of the entire gas fleet. We are all sensitive to making town budgets work. Why are the town departments not incorporating the cost savings into the numbers and budget goals? Could the town departments clarify the alternative methods that could be started as they acquire electric blowers? For example, kind of layering in as you acquire the electric? For example, in year two, could you not begin to use electric that you have purchased on a replacement basis? Or are you waiting for any response to only start in year three? These are unanswered questions that public has, has regarding the variance that need to be addressed. I want to thank all of you for the hard work that the Board of Selectmen, Ben Branyan, and indeed the Parks and Rec and Public Works have put into making this transition for our town. We really agree, appreciate all, all the hard work, thanks.
Thank you, Elizabeth, and we appreciate all the research you've done for years on this and other issues in town. Thanks, Elizabeth.
The next speaker is Roberto Fernandez.
So I'm hiding there in the back. Good morning. Green, yeah.
I'm Roberto Fernandez, I'm a town resident for 38 years here, and also I'm owner of a landscaping company. I want to thank, thank Peter for his comments. And a lot of the landscapers, and I'm sorry that they're no more here, but we feel that we should be considered the same variance that the town is proposing. I know it's very cost-effective for the town and the taxpayers, but also it's going to be for our size of small business, comparing to percentage, the investment that we have to do. So what I'm asking you guys is to please make it more even and more organically to move into the movement of electric blowers, and we're happy to cooperate it. But right now, if we can get the same time that the town will, will get, we'll, we very appreciate. And also, I don't want to put Quiet Yards in the spot, but, you know, we have that big, great expo here a few months ago. And I came out to us to see where the grant was to offset some of the cost of this equipment. They, they ran the campaign for helping us to, to that. And our answer, the answer was that they didn't, they weren't able to have the money yet. So I'm just asking where we stand with that. But again, I'll appreciate Fred, if you can look into this and, you know, if you, if you make it more even for, and set an example that the town should be setting example for this, I think you will have more cooperation from the professional landscapers here. Thank you.
Thank you, Roberto, appreciate it.
Okay, we have via Zoom, Myra Glockenbrink.
Good morning.
Good morning, Myra.
Good morning, thank you very much for this opportunity. For the record, my name is Myra Glockenbrink, and I'm calling in today to urge you not to approve this variance. While curbing the use of gas-powered leaf blowers is a significant step one decade's in the making, it is still a very low bar to meet. And I would hope that our town people can demonstrate success by using electric alternatives when necessary. Most leaf blower use is not required in summer, and electric machines that have advanced to be superior alternative to gas leaf blowers in performance and in the reduction of noise and pollution. It is a small but significant step, and I would like to think we can all be confident in our town staff to make that step in solidarity with residents and professional landscapers by leading the way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Myra.
Okay, we have DPW Commissioner Amy Seabert.
Okay, good morning, Amy.
Good morning, Amy Seabert, DPW Commissioner, Public Works. A little redundant there, redundancy redundant. So Public Works is a little bit of an odd duck with respect to leaf blower use because, of course, we're not parks, we're not a landscaper. But we use blowers for a variety of work. We're, we're lucky that a lot of the bulk of our work kind of falls outside some of the summer months, but we clean 56 acres of parking lots. Heavy cleaning in the spring and fall, but then throughout the summer. So that's an awful lot of area to clean. Now, we also do about 12 miles of paving a year on average. And you go, well, what does paving have to do with blowers? So we use blowers when we're cleaning, cleaning areas, cleaning for striping and, and road markings. We're also cleaning the edges of the road when you see milling going on, and then the pavement coming down. If you notice, in this town, we have a very clean operation where you don't have a lot of material along the edge of the road because the guys will blow that material out of the right-of-way there and are able to pick up and clean up. It used to be way back in the day, because I talked to some of our old timers, what the heck did you do before you had the blowers? And you would try to maybe rake, you would maybe have a lot of debris left over. So the level of service was much lower than what we're able to provide today with that, with tidying up the operation. That said, we said, let's try, one of the questions I think I heard here was, why can't we try electric blowers? We went ahead and we have, we do have a budget such that we can't replace.
Your phone is ringing.
Can you mute yourself, please? Continue.
Sorry, we do, we do have, we don't have a budget to replace all our, we're not trying to replace all our blowers, but to get more electric blowers for summer work, we were able to pick up two of them, and so we're testing them. Heard a lot about how they're more efficient and better than the gas blowers, and we're still trying to find that unit. What we're finding is they're heavy, and we're finding that on the couple that we got, we're going to have to try to see what is the next model we can get, that the battery lasted, one of, we, we got a couple of Echo backpacks. One battery, it lasted 20 minutes while blowing some heavier wet debris, and then the other unit lasted 30 minutes. Now we're out there for hours. So what we're seeing is that when we get these, we're going to have to make sure we get an awful lot of batteries so that we can keep changing the batteries out for the guys so they can keep the productivity up for themselves as they're trying to clean some of these areas. So we're trying to figure this out, but we're not there yet that we have sufficient equipment, and equipment with sufficient power for us to handle some of these summer operations. I think people also forget, you know, if we have to stripe a parking lot or we're doing lines down the road, it was suggested to us that we use a broom. And you think about that, that that would be, you know, we're striping for hours, and the machine, you know, if you're, if you're doing long lines on a road, you're going to be going a few miles an hour. So I was like, thinking about myself trying to be out there with a broom. So I was like thinking about myself trying to be out there with a broom at five or six miles an hour ahead of the machine for several hours. I was like, I don't think I could do that. But again, it may lend itself to a good electric unit when we can get one that's going to give us the capacity that we need and the battery life. So we are hoping for that respite over time here. We are trying to use some of these units, but we don't have sufficient budget at this time to have sufficient for our work this summer. So not sure if you have any questions.
Understood. Just one question. Have you factored into if you bought extra batteries, the cost savings are comparative to what you spend in the gas?
It was, our analysis of some of the units just on paper with the information without having actually experimented with the units, it was going to be very expensive, hence that's what drove some of the figures that we gave to Ben, you know, in looking at what parks had looked into, what we had looked into. You know, we're trying to sort out, you know, the business of when you're out far away from your sheds, you either need a lot of batteries, do you need a little inverter on a truck so you can have a charge, something that could be charging them as you're going? What is the, what are the implications of that? So it's tricky because for some of the work that we do, we need that, it's not, it's not just, you know, me with a broom on my driveway or a lighter weight unit. You need some oomph to move some of the material. Again, it's going to depend. You know, our guys were like, hey, these are going to be great when we're trimming around a sign, maybe trimming around a traffic signal or something, trying to get debris out of the road. It's a quick five, 10-minute operation. We can take an electric blower and tidy that up. That'll be great. But for some of the other ones, we still are not, have not found the unit that's going to give us great productivity, nor do we have the budget to purchase them all for the, all the teams that we have out there. Because again, we have, when you, when you see us paving for, what is it, six, it's a good solid six-week period in the summertime, 10 hours a day operation, pretty much, if you know Public Works, most of our staff are all out there doing that all at one time too. Everybody's out there. You need some horsepower for that. So hopefully, hopefully, the good thing about our work is we're normally in and out. Of course, paving's noisy anyway. All the machines, the paving work is probably unpleasant and noisy, so the blower may be the least of the worry, but we're moving around, so.
So I just have a point of clarification. I mean, I appreciate your explanation of what it is that Public Works needs the blowers for, but you're not talking about residential properties. So would you need a variance in this case?
Well, we understood that since, again, when we pave, we're paving in residential neighborhoods, we understood we were subject to this in the same fashion. You know, not every parking lot indeed may be considered residential. However, so many of our areas are in residential neighborhoods. So we, you know, I guess the good side is we figured if we're all subject to this, we should all be subject to this, but can we catch up in time? And, you know, we'd love to have dispensation that, yeah, if we're lining, it's not considered residential and therefore we're okay. But, you know, the benefits of them, I think Ben said this, the benefits are if you have something, they're still noisy. We still may need hearing protection, right, for our guys, but is it somewhat better? You know, we're thinking about the ergonomics. Are they going to get any lighter? If you're out there working for multiple hours a day, think about yourself out there carrying a blower, whether it's gas or electric. For electric, some of them, they'll say, well, if you put three batteries on there, you'll get all this runtime. Put it on the scale. It's substantial. So if you need to, you know, be doing that work for hours a day, that, and for all I know, that, I don't know if that's one of mine or, you know, someone else. Sorry, I have a mom I keep my phone on for, so sometimes I forget to turn it off. But if you are out there for hours a day with a backpack on, you know, the guys have been looking at some of these heavier-duty units, and they're like 40 pounds, you know, or 45, you know, and you're going, wow. So you, we're trying to sort all that out as we look at these units, look at the longevity of the battery life, look at the work we're trying to do. We've looked at, are there other contraptions that we can use? You know, what, the market keeps changing and shifting. I think we're going to continue to see, hopefully, better products, but it's going to, going to be interesting to take some time.
Thank you, Amy. Appreciate it.
Next speaker is Parks and Recreation Director Joe Siciliano.
Morning, Joe.
Nothing like talking about leaf blowers. It brings a crowd together, you know? So I'm going to repeat a lot of the things Amy said because we've been in close communication. Dan Carlson has done a lot of the analysis work for us, been talking to DPW. Just a couple of points. And I don't want to belabor this, but it is something that we've done and we're proud of. Parks and Recreation has approximately 1,900 acres per week. It maintains 160 acres at the golf course, which is affected. In the last 10 years or 15 years, we reduced our staff by 11 park gardeners, so the head count has gone down, counting on the efficiency of the best equipment that we could have to do the work. And we keep relaying that to the BET. When they talk about our equipment budget and how they want to cut it, we said, well, we gave up the staffing, so we need the more effective equipment in order to keep up the maintenance of various properties. Interesting point, and Dan is great at researching, the national average of acreage per park gardener is 13.5. Our guys are carrying 30.44 acres each, so we're almost double the amount of acreage per person that works for us as a park gardener. And that's a kind of an interesting point because we're carrying a lot more property per person, and it has to do with the equipment that we have, the processes that we use, how we manage our staffing, and our oversight. The, it's, you know, when we, this actually helped us look into a couple of things that we can use in other budgetary discussions because, you know, it's interesting enough, we, you know, we have, currently, we have 46 mowers that we, throughout our system. 45 of those mowers have been either purchased or converted to mulching mowers so that it's a process that you use to reclaim the grass. It goes back into the, into the, into the surface. So we've, you know, we've established a different priority over the years when we purchase equipment so that, you know, we would, it would be less of, less of an opportunity for us to have to blow those types of things. The, a couple of things is that Amy brought up that the backpack weight, this is a concern for us. The backpacks, the electric backpack blowers with a full complement of batteries weigh approximately 13 pounds more than the gas-powered blower, backpack blower with a full tank of gas. We're looking at those durations that our guys are going to have to wear those things and how we do that. Recently, we had a distributor at Baldwin Park, this is for, was for park and maybe some DPW personnel only, to come down. Our folks tried the equipment on, they've used it. Some of them have some, we've had some comments, some have some concerns, some of them like the equipment. So we're moving in that direction. We've also purchased a couple of pieces of equipment to demo. We just bought some equipment. We're trying to figure out what that equipment might be into the future, obviously, in order to have some very efficiencies in equipment. We don't want to have multiple types of equipment, so we have the same battery system throughout the park system. We have the same type of equipment for repair. Those are the kind of things that we really need to get to find out which one's going to work for us, and I'm sure the private landscapers are doing the same thing. I've talked to a couple of them, said, well, I don't want to buy, you know, a backpack blower that has this battery and a handheld electric blower that has this battery. And so they're looking for some continuity in purchase, in purchasing and, you know, so that they're not, have multiple pieces of equipment with multiple type batteries and need different types of repair. There's some issues that we have that in the workplace, in the work shed, our work sheds are pretty antiquated, a couple of them. There's not, there's not really electrical service that maybe can charge the batteries in some volume that we're going to have to. So we may be looking at some upgrades for our work locations where we're going to charge these batteries. The battery systems themselves, disposal of batteries is quite expensive. And the last thing I'll really comment on is that these, the calculations of how much it costs to operate gas-powered blowers versus electric blowers. I'll just say this, the last time I looked at my electric bill, it was 24.9 cents per kilowatt-hour, okay, to charge, and this would be in case, charge batteries. We don't live near a nuclear power plant, so obviously, that power is being generated by diesel fuel somewhere in the system. So in this, in the northeast corridor, since, especially around here, we don't, we don't get our power from a, from a, from a nuclear power plant. We get it from diesel generation. So this, all of this calculation about gasoline versus electric versus somehow that electricity is being generated, and that generation is become from diesel generation, and it's being sold to us as customers at 24.9 cents per kilowatt-hour. So there's a cost to even using electric leaf blowers. We understand what the direction that the town wants to go in. We've, I think we've made some positive steps in demoing some equipment, having dealers come in and looking at their product, and we'll, you know, we'll move forward with an integrated program over the next year, in a couple of years, to get the appropriate equipment that we need and, and to provide the service that I think the town residents would really like to have. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Much appreciated. Just going through the list. Who's next?
Okay, the last person who signed up is Dave DeAndrea.
Dave. Yes, go now. Yeah. Morning, Dave.
Sorry, I'm a little slow, but thank you.
Good to see you, Dave.
For those who don't know me, I'm a Greenwich native, fourth-generation, product of the landscape industry. My family was the largest landscape company in Connecticut at one time. I'm also a product of Parks and Rec. Over 30 some-odd years involved with Parks and Rec, chairman of the board. Over 14 years, the director of operations at the golf course, and I am currently a 25-year member of the Golf Course Superintendents of America. So I think I know a little about turf. Oh, Peter, how are you? I agree with a lot both sides said here, because I come from both sides, obviously. I've been before the RTM many times as chairman, requesting things. I agree with a lot you said, Fred, as first selectman. The BET has a lot of role to play in this, and they need to step up. Mr. Siciliano needs the money, they need to get it. Amy was correct. They're doing best practices for the better of the town people because it's more efficient rather than taking forever. I totally agree with Mr. Lawrenson. I think everybody needs to be treated the same. I think there needs to be a transition period because this is a very expensive implementation program, and the landscapers deserve the same right. They work hard, that's their business. I've been there, I know what it's all about, and they should not be one separated from the other. I totally agree with Mr. Siciliano, so does he. I think he's ready to implement what the town wants. It's a matter of budget, BET. Obviously, and Fred, correct me if I'm wrong, is this an RTM decision ultimately? Because I don't think this is a...
Well, we, the RTM passed the ordinance already, but what we're doing is we're asking for an exemption from what they did, and that's why we're having this public hearing is because we want to hear things like this. And, you know, some valid points have been brought up here on both sides.
Absolutely.
And I, you know, we certainly have, our work cut out for us, but you want to be fair. Growing up here in town, I did my fair share landscaping for many years, and I get it. And I was a small businessman man for 20 years in this town, so I totally get it. And I also get, you know, where our departments are coming from and watching out for the taxpayers, and $336,000 is nothing to sneeze at either. So, you know, there's, there's been some great points made here, and I think we have some work to do, but certainly, we're proud of the direction it's going in despite some of the, you know, the challenges we have with this. We get it, but...
This is a big challenge.
But we're moving forward, and I think these are great points. That's the reason why we're having this.
I think the direction is the right way. We need to do this. I think the implementation is number one, which Mr. Lawrenson pointed to, and number two, the points that Joe and Amy made, they all need to be put together, and everybody needs to be treated equal. I don't know if you have any questions.
So just process-wise, because Barbara Schellen, Barbara's leaving.
She saw you look over there.
I was just going to say, because I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, so I would look to our town attorney, Barbara Schellenberg, but the RTM passed the ordinance, but now the Board of Selectmen own the noise ordinance. So it would, that's why it's coming before us is because if there's a variance, it would be up to us.
Is there a variance necessary for this? I don't think so.
Well, parks, the departments came to us because they're in some neighborhoods, and they, you know, when I was in the legislature, sometimes they would pass laws, and we'd get up there and argue at four in the morning, five in the morning about, you know, prevailing weight, how is it going to affect the town? No, it's not going to affect the town. Well, it turns out it did affect the town, since we had to go back there the next year and redo the bill. So you try to avoid those things, and certainly, you know, there's, legislation can be tough sometimes, but that's why we, you know, this is a very good thing to have here today.
Yeah. No more questions, I'm fine.
Thank you, Dave.
And I need to scoot. I apologize. I'm not diminishing the next three items on the agenda. We probably over, we were over...
Did you sign up? Okay.
She can, like, do, uh, just speak.
Uh, yeah, can we, we'll make an amendment here, just allow one more speaker. Two minutes, please. Thank you so much. Just identify yourself and see you, Lauren.
Good morning, Fred. I'm Katherine Briggs.
Hi, Katherine, how are you?
Good. How are you doing? Did they get that? Did you...
Katherine Briggs.
Okay. Good morning, I'm Katherine Briggs. Thank you for allowing me to speak, my two minutes. We passed this in the RTM, but our proposal for the landscapers was to include the town and everybody be fair. And Amy made a lot of points. Our experience is the ergonomics of those machines and the cost, but also the function and how they're improving over time. And that's something to be considered. So why should the landscapers be going out to spend a whole bunch of money, then throw it away, and then a whole bunch more money as we're trying to complete our jobs? I feel maybe it should be up to the homeowner of what they ask and request of us for the next couple of years. If they want electric, then we can figure it out on a smaller scale. It doesn't have to be across the board. Make it up to the residents. And it should be informed with everybody, every resident and every owner should be informed through their utility bills or some other tax purpose. It shouldn't be trying to get this database of landscapers and who's here, who's not here. It should be through the residence properties of the owners where we're servicing, commercial and residential. And so I appreciate your time, and I really want to pick on Amy's points and Joe's points of the town. We're trying to work on this in the background, but just the logics, the logistics, and the weight and the ergonomics, that's workers' comp. Everybody I talk to in the town and anybody I talk to, workers' comp accidents, I mean, in Harrison, they reduced the number of trash haulers and people working there because they got that machine to lift up because so many guys were hurting their shoulders. So it's the same thing. We want to be mindful of that. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Katherine. Much appreciated. Okay, so we've, we have, I apologized before because I should have taken a vote to close the other public hearing, so before we do, you know, as we close, I will take a vote on that. But Ben first, and then we have one here from our town attorney.
Just a procedure, once you close the public hearing, the ordinance says you have 10 days for a written opinion. That's, and that's clearly in the variance, that's in the full text in front of you on page two of the memo. You do have an option if you feel you'd need more than 10 days, the town attorney and I were talking, you can continue the public hearing. But as soon as you close the public hearing, the clock begins for 10 days, just for point of information.
And what's the clock that we have to...
10 days.
No, no, but what is the clock for? That we have to vote or...
An opinion. You have to issue a written opinion on the variance before you for the town. So you have 10 days after this public hearing to issue that opinion.
And if we wanted, and this may be a Barbara question, but if we wanted to address this but also amend what was given to us by the RTM, because we've heard some ideas here and some valid points on both sides, is that our next step, or could that be incorporated into the opinion?
Well, I'm not sure what you mean by amending what the RTM has done.
So in other words, so in other words, this is just an exemption for town equipment?
Right. This is just to address the variance application that's before you.
So if we wanted to, is this more of an RTM thing where if you wanted to line it up with the landscapers, whether you shortened it for both and got them on an equal footing?
I mean, the landscapers could certainly seek a variance, I believe, right? Yeah. I mean, anyone can seek, can potentially seek a variance, yeah. And again, I recommend...
I'm not speaking for them, I'm just, I'm just trying to...
Right. But you, but this public hearing is just on the variance application that's before you. But I do recommend if you feel like you need more time, if you might want more information or...
or additional speakers, then, as Ben said, you certainly can continue the public hearing. You do not have to close it today, because you should be mindful of that 10-day period, as he said, to have a written opinion.
Yes, a written opinion or ask for a continuance, to keep it open.
That's up to you, if you decide you want to continue the public hearing.
At the very least, I would suggest we not close the public hearing, because Lauren's not here.
Yeah, absolutely.
And if we were... Again, the three of us, because of FOIA rules, if the three of us are to issue...
We're going to have to call a special meeting.
We would either have to have a special meeting, or we'd have to continue to our next meeting.
Right.
I'm just going to put it on the record. For this very reason that it becomes a slippery slope, I'm not in favor of a variance. That said, the argument about funding, the town is different than a private landscaper. You know, we just had a very difficult BET budget process, and we're not done, because the RTM hasn't voted on the budget yet. So with that in mind, I'm just putting it out there so people know where I stand on this. I would be open to a one-year variance, because I think that we will know a lot in one year. And just like we're asking utilities to come back before us to show progress, I would ask our departments to come back to us after a year to show progress. So in the spirit of compromise, I would be open that the town get a one-year variance, and only the town. But like I said, at the very least, there's only two of us, which is not to say that we can't make a decision, but with respect to our colleague, I would say, let's keep this open.
100%. We'll keep it open, and then we'll go on to the next item. But certainly, we'll either get a written opinion, or we'll keep it open. But we'll get something to you. Roberto, yes, for a second time, just...
Just very quickly.
Take your time.
I'm sorry. We're not different on the town. I'm sorry, but we play the same rules. We have the same expenses in different levels and different percentage. So what we're asking is, if you're going to give the town three or four years of variance, we would like to have the same. And also compromising, because I'm one of the leaders in a lot of the landscape industry here in Greenwich, and I'm pushing more and more to be more conscious and be more respectful of the amount of units that they're using in the property in the summer. So I've been compromising for many years to use one blower per property in the summer. There are other much equipment out there that are quieter, with less decibels, their gas. And it's just about the training and how you educate a lot of these landscapers. Our problem, as you know, Fred, and we brought it up to you, is all this non-registered or legal business in this town. And that's your issue. You see them around on Saturday and Sunday, making tons of noise from 7:00 in the morning until 6:00 PM. But we have to obey it, but they don't. I think if you start from that, you have a quiet Greenwich here.
And with all due respect, my point is that your purse strings are not controlled by the BET.
They're not funded by the town of Greenwich. Taxes are applied to the customers. We have requests. Our clients request certain things in their property, because they're paying for their services and they're paying their property taxes. So if they expect certain things, we have to do it. We try to do it as quick as possible, but...
Yeah, I know a lot of the scofflaws as I go around the streets in the summer.
Given the time, three years...
It's not the guys that I see in this room or the guys that have been in business a lot of time. It's people from out of state sometimes. I get it. I see it.
Saturday, you go to all these commercial places. On Saturday mornings, 7:00, and they're making noise. And we have to wait until 9:00 to make noise.
And I've been contacted by several guys in the last year, who, landscapers will say they're going by Sheeple Road, and somebody's blowing it left 6:30 at night. And it's not somebody they've ever seen before. So there's a little bit of that out there. So we certainly understand that. So I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Dempsey, for a second time?
Sorry, just because... Sorry, sat on. Okay, great. Just for a final thing. I'd be happy to provide Dan and Joe. I appreciate all the hard work, and I totally agree with Joe and Amy's. Constrictions are very different than, say, homeowners or commercial landscapers. Be happy to provide you with the financial analysis that you were referring to last year, the last two years' averages for actual Greenwich were far lower than 24% for the electric bill, cost of charges drastically lower than your per hour versus your gas. And I've got the numbers to show it based on actual rates. And I'd be happy to share the model, because I do feel that, in general, with this process, which is excellent, we do have to look at what these departments, what burdens they have. But then do look at the savings, right? Because BET really does matter, and your budgets matter. So we'd be happy to share that with you. Also happy to share with you machines that are 50% more powerful than the Echo, that the town departments, the Echo version that's electric, that the town has been trying, that are also less expensive and are more powerful than gas. I have an actual model. Be happy to donate it. And also, the comment about diesel power for electric generation, it's 37% of ISO electric that serves the Connecticut grid is on renewable. So it's not all on diesel. So just wanted to make those points, and would be happy to contribute the financial modeling that most of the country has done. And also, Norwalk Town Operations could be looked at as a precedent, because they're converting in one year. In one year, Town Operations in Norwalk will be doing a summer ban. So just wanted to put that out there. So precedent is there, and other towns in Westchester have made the conversion, too. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Elizabeth. You want to? So we're going to keep it open. We're going to keep it open. Thank you so much for that. We'll keep the public hearing open. And we have another item on the agenda, but I guess a motion is going to be made to postpone it.
There's actually two. There's the sustainability report, which, given that Monday was Earth Day, it was very timely, but I really do, I want to celebrate it. I don't want to rush through it, and I would love for my colleague, Lauren Raven, to be here. So I would like to postpone that. But I'd also ask, could we... And I see Wendy in the room.
Yes. We can postpone the KPIs. It's not time-sensitive.
Okay. All right.
So a motion? Thank you so much. Sorry about that. We know this is going to probably happen.
Ben read my mind.
Make a motion.
We do have two other speakers who have signed up for the public comment period. But you will need to make a motion to postpone these two items.
We wouldn't postpone public comment. I'm just going to make a motion to postpone the next two items, which are the sustainability report... Sorry. The... That's not right. But anyway, whatever.
Sustainability report.
Sustainability report. And the KPI report.
I second that. All those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thank you so much. And before we check out, I guess there's two more people that want to speak.
And you also have a request for approval of subleases and rental items from the Greenwich Arts Council.
If you have item E, I have spoken to Greenwich Arts Council. That's not as time-sensitive, but hopefully you can waive the second read in May 9. That can be postponed.
Absolutely. That would be a quick one.
As item E, and wait after this one.
Thank you. My second page was disappeared, so thank you. Thanks, Ben. So Barb, if they still have their hands up, hopefully they can get it in a couple of minutes.
Okay, so would you also make a motion, please, to request postponement of the approval of subleases and rental terms for the Greenwich Arts Council and waive the second read at the May 9 meeting? I'll need a motion in a second.
So I motion that we postpone the sublease rental agreement with the Arts Council... Probably messed that up. Till the next meeting, and hopefully to get that done in a one read, since apparently it's not time-sensitive.
Right. Well, and I was going to point out, in some sense, even though we're not discussing it, it is a first read, because everything's posted. If someone wanted to look at that lease and give us feedback, they can.
Yes.
So I'm fine with that. So Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Barb. Good catch.
Okay. Next up, we have for the public comment period, first is Bill Galvin concerning the Wallace Center elevator.
Is the bell going to ring at 12? Are we going to cut off discussion at 12?
We're already three minutes late, but go ahead, Billy.
All right, good.
It's not your fault.
You know, it is ironic. I'm looking at the email that the Health and Human Services Department, the committee of the RTM, the Health and Human Services Committee, the RTM, we sent an email dated April 19 to the Board of Selectmen, the subject being the status of the elevator and the Wallace Center. And it's ironic that, listening for the last two hours, my lead sentence, our lead sentence was, "We recognize in this growing community, there is an ever-increasing number of issues being brought to you, requiring, quotes, 'immediate attention and action.'" I mean, the last two hours, everything is urgent. Everything has to be done, and had to be done yesterday. What we want to focus on is an issue with the elevator in the Wallace Center, AKA the senior center. This elevator, which is ancient, has not been operating well for more than a decade. We have complained. Multiple town departments have been involved. And as I say in this letter, anybody from the outside looking at this would think that there was a level of indifference, considering we're talking about the seniors in this town. And Fred was gracious enough to respond, and saying that, obviously, we take the seniors seriously. But Greenwich last year was designated as an age-friendly community. Yet we have, for more than 10 years, an elevator, which is a high-risk experience for anyone taking it in the Wallace Center. We have been through DPW, numerous discussions, every one of which has been followed by further delay, more and more inaction, and essentially, it's a kicking the can down the road, and nothing has happened. I mean, this is a legal liability for the town. Nothing's happening. And we have gone around and around on this. And as I say in this note, before we go to the public and highlight the dramatic nature of this potential liability, we'd like to see some immediate action. It is not a budget issue. The Wallace grant covers the potential replacement for this elevator. Definitely, it covers any kind of studies that need to be done to decide whether it should be replaced or if it's possible to repair it. The realities are, because the elevator is so old, it's difficult to find spare parts now. So the logic is that it should be replaced. But there needs to be some urgency put on this project. It has been delayed, 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 delayed. And, you know, there's been so many references, "Well, we'll get back to you tomorrow. We'll get back to you next week." "Well, we're doing some research." And it's only when we follow up to say, "Well, what's been happening? Oh, well, we haven't gotten to it yet." This has been going on for 10 years.
Good news, Bill, so I can update you. I had a meeting late yesterday on this.
With Luigi?
Yes. So the vendor we've been using, and I already forgot.
Sinclair or something like that.
Yeah, so apparently, they're not using them anymore. We lost several months there. They have a new one now. Definitely, the way it was explained to me, again, that I said, "If you repair versus new..." He said, "It's way better to do..." If repairing is almost gutting the whole thing, but you not have to put a crane in there.
Right, right.
So it's more expensive new, and it takes longer for new. But I said, "But what about the lifeline, the lifetime usage out of it?" He said, "It's exactly the same." So I said, "That makes it easier than to say, 'Let's do the repair.'" And he said he agreed. They're going to be getting something out shortly about that, because I'd said that there was a lot of frustration with this. And I think sometimes, if there's a delay for whatever reason, and it may have been with the vendor, people need to know that. So he got that yesterday. So he was very good about explaining it. He will get something out there in the coming days, and hopefully by Monday or Tuesday.
I appreciate that, but I think it ought to be on the record that the selectmen said would be the coming days or maybe early next week.
I'm on the record.
Our committee will be watching anxiously for follow-up, because if it doesn't happen timely, we really, we do need to raise the flag, ring the bell, whatever the metaphor is. This has gone on too long, and it is just incongruous with the town being designated a senior-friendly town, and the seniors are the ones who are getting so little service.
Yeah, this will be taken care of, and we hopefully won't have to hear about this anymore. But as we speak, I'm sending Luigi the notes, so we get out there, so I don't... People say I don't speak with a forked tongue.
I guarantee that if we don't hear back, you will be seeing us again.
So if I could just weigh in very quickly. I've likened riding that elevator to a scary amusement park ride. Right?
That's on the record.
It is on the record, and I have said this. And I thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. I just want to point out that the three of us, we can't meet to discuss things outside of a public meeting. So if you're asking the three of us to address this, it either has to be in this meeting, which, as you see, is often packed, and we can't get into the details, or if you invite all of the parties to a public meeting, either the RTM committee or to a Commission on Aging meeting, then everybody can get together, and we can all talk about things and be comparing the same facts. So again, thank you so much for bringing this to our attention, and I, for one, would be very happy to be as supportive as I can in a meaningful way.
Thank you. I'm just sending Luigi the note now, because I'm going to be in transit in a few seconds. So thank you, Bill. Appreciate that. Something will be out there shortly.
And we have one last speaker who's signed up, and that is Marsha O'Kane from the Chamber of Commerce.
Oh, sure. Hi, Marsha. You've been waiting patiently.
Oh, boy, I've been so disciplined here. But thank you. I am here to follow up on the projects proposed by Aquarian and Eversource, some that are going on, and just want everyone to be very mindful about the safety and accessibility of our shoppers July 11, 12, 13, and 14. Sidewalk sales, as we all know, thousands of shoppers descend on Greenwich Avenue and